Call of the meeting to order, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Victor Felderward, and Berkeley Pupup that are not present. Kevin Ritter, all of them are present.
A motion for adoption of the agenda. So move at a second.
One second.
additions, subtractions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to communications recognition. This is a change of format for us. So as I remember our process, nobody has signed up tonight, but for future reference.
I'll have it out there at six fifteen for signing up as usual.
People can sign up and if there are people that want to talk, the first twenty minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes of the board would be open to comments from the committee. But nobody signed up tonight. Alright. Moving on to item six, board committees. First would be DAC.
DAC, I attended, we talked a little bit about school spirit, we talked about enrollment, everything is very well. Enrollment is pretty much steady across the board. Talked a little bit about some unique situations around the area. But nothing else over, it was probably about a twenty minute meeting at most. It was only myself, Mr. Meyer, and Ms. Lurk. It's actually, it's probably one of those committees, I think it's kind of ran its course and I don't know if it's needed in the future, from my opinion.
Is it something that is required? This is like PTA, it's a booster club type thing?
No, the booster club is the meeting before, which is the Dutchman. I'm talking about the PTA.
Yeah, well, see, like the booster meets usually at eight. And then the DAC meets at nine.
Correct.
So they don't sit in on the booster crap at all, so they don't see that at all, but.
So are their students?
We did have a student there too, yes, that's right.
Do you think that there are things that could be addressed there that are just, I mean, is it a is it something that's run its course because there isn't a need for it, or is it the run its course because there isn't?
I think a lot of the stuff that eight years ago, well, seven years ago, it wasn't on the first year. It seemed like we were more, you know, into fundraising, what do we do to increase school spirit? What's the public thinking about this? A lot of that stuff has been shifted over to the Dutchman. But it just seems like. So what Mr. Ralph would do is he would talk about what they talked about. And all we would be is just kind of concurring and agreeing, or if we had any add thing to add.
And I think on the years that I've been on, it's how do we get more participation? How do we get kids not to drink? How do we get kids, you know, not to do this, not to do that? It's like kind of a yearly thing that was talked about, but every year was talked about, but nothing's ever decided on how to do things. It seemed.
Like I said, a lot of that stuff, it just seems like it's been kind of transferred over to the booster club and less about the DAC, from my perspective, once again.
Questions, Randy? And then the next one, this is a this is a new acronym. Becky could not attend, and I had a meeting that came up that morning in North Carolina. Moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Tucker?
Good evening all. Just a few things, we're going to start scheduling bottom one early this year. Sawyer being on leave. So as a result, our scheduling should be done, which part of the which part of the, that should be an issue, other schools, many schools, both over here, so it's not an issue there. Only got about twenty days of semester one after today, so it's crazy how fast the time has gone. Seniors will have their second open campus on the ninth of January, so that's right around the corner. Right now, time of giving, there's been a a benefit for Alec Whining, students, student council, and staff have been collecting funds, donations for Alec. It's a senior that was injured, it was past fall, helping clear down trees. So optimistic, more optimistic than returning to school in the first part of January. And just wishing them all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, good evening. So tonight we have our winter choir concert, tonight's at eight, so Mr. Duckett and I, we headed that after this meeting. Middle school students council sponsor a pep fest Friday. They're doing some unique things, they're doing some minute winning games. And something that they haven't done before is they have some staff members that have volunteered to take a pie in the face. And students are giving money and then they get to pick the staff. So the staff member with the most votes gets a pie in the face on that day and the proceeds will go to the St. Nick project. That money will be given to that project, so we're hoping Mr. Nolan wins.
A lot of kids are.
We bullied for it.
We open this to like graduates.
So just as an update, I know you guys are always interested in the girls' recipe since it's new. They're doing great, we're, we will put out a full team, well, I would have put out a full team starting tomorrow, but one of my wrestlers dislocated her elbow in warmups before a tournament the other day, so I'll be one short tomorrow. We go to Brainerd for a quad, and Friday we go to Monticello for a huge tournament with twenty-seven other teams, so. And I also want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Alright, good evening. Just wanted to let you know that the elementary has had a special education student teacher in the elementary, and she finished last week and graduated, so it's great to host her, I think she was in the middle school before that. And starting in January, Mrs. Masho is going to host a fifth grade student teacher. And it was Mrs. Duputh that hosted in special ed, so I do thank those two teachers for their willingness to mentor some incoming young educators, so we love to have them in the building. And we're starting to plan for kindergarten roundup already for our twenty-five kindergarten roundup. And that will be April fourth. And then I just wanted to, I shared the news link, we have a weekly news link that Mrs. Schulterberg is so gracious to record, a couple of students get to be the news commentators, and they get to share the news, but then at the end, you saw the video of all the fun and the festivities that we had in the elementary, as you can tell, we've been decorating the hallways and there's a little contest. And there were some people that were from the secondary staff, district office, that came around and judged. And they had a really hard time trying to decide, the kids had a lot of fun amongst their learning, so it was something that we've never done before, and I think we gave the secondary the run for their money comparing to some of the freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, so we hope they'll come look at ours this year, because they're pretty good. Anyway, they had a lot of fun, and I hope you had fun watching that news link. And I too just ask you, and I hope that you can have a Merry Christmas and just definitely a blessed New Year in 2025.
Mr. Winter?
Well, so much good news, I hate to start off my first one, but I think everybody's aware, we're going to have to carefully monitor what goes on in the next legislative session. For this next biennium, two years, they are projecting a surplus. It's certainly not the surplus that was bad in the last couple of years. The bad news is the projection in the following biennium is there's going to be a significant deficit. Now, it is a forecast, all it is is a forecast. And the only reason why I bring it up tonight is in light of last, last month's audit report. It's why it's good to have healthy fund balance, so in times of, we got to make some cuts, try to preserve some programs through a biennium or two. I went through that in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, in two thousand ten and two thousand twelve. It's good to have that surplus if you need to get by, so you don't have to cut so much. One of the other things I've been working on, our, our school nurse, and she's went out on a leave of absence. We've been fortunate, we've been able to find a couple of retired nurses and a new parent to the district. If I hadn't gone to my administration team and gone to everybody that I could think of, we gobbled a schedule together for December and January, where we have a nursery every day except so far for one day in January, and then we're going to start planning it in February, March when our nurse returns. School nurses are hard to find, and there are many districts around us that do not have a school nurse. They go, they contract through resource training. We've been fortunate that we found a nurse, and we were very fortunate that we have some retired nurses in the area and a new parent of the area that's going to be able to fill in in December and January. Especially this time of year, it's a very needed position with all the things that are going on. If anybody's not aware, but our metal shop is going through a transformation with some very generous donations from the public. They're going to have new welding moves, new welders, new HVAC, new electrical, new paint, the paint's already in, the shop already looks better. These are all because of some generous donations, that we'll talk about, one of them later in the donation. But we're also going to be purchasing a new iron worker for our Perkins grant. The iron worker, if you've never seen it, but I'll see it sometime, it's just a machine that bends metal, does different things, it's been kind of the standard metalworking machine, machine for many, many years. And we're going to use our Perkins grant to purchase another one for our metal students. And like all the other administrators talked about, first of all, I want to thank, and Ms. Pearson mentioned it. Thank all our staff and students for making the building look very festive for this time of year. As Ms. Pearson said, the students in the secondary have always done a good job, but the elementary is absolutely beautiful this year. And for the kids, I think that means a lot, so Merry Christmas and have a very happy, safe New Year on your travels.
Moving on to item eight, non-action items. First would be initial review of the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
I included a copy of the calendar in your folder, the draft calendar is already on our website. Every year I put this thing together, and I sit down with Mr. Anderson, the math guy, to make sure everything's counted out. This year I've turned it over to Mr. Anderson, and he's come back to me when it's finished. So this is our proposed twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. I'm looking for bringing this to the board in February for final approval. We just tried to get it out there on the websites, send it out to our, like, our reading units, our professional development committees. And once again, it's on our website, so we're always looking for some input. But this is just the initial review draft of the calendar, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson for any comment.
So the typical parties have it, our staff development committee has it, union has it, LMC has it. The three parochial principals have received it, we're just lacking feedback. One of the main differences between last year, or this year and next year will be Christmas is an odd time where we have it set up where we'll have two full weeks off, so that pushes it off a little bit, just the way Christmas falls. Some schools will go to school on Monday and Tuesday, I don't know if that's the best idea, so we're looking for feedback, so.
Are you trying to capture a couple more days?
So we did capture one, you'll notice one difference between this year's calendar and next year's calendar is we only have one makeup day on there for a snow day, where this year we have two. And I took that second day off because of, I didn't want to bring staff back on a Friday. I mean, on a Monday after the kids were done on a Friday at the end of the year, if that makes sense. To have staff come back that second week of June, I don't think it's necessarily ideal on a Monday.
Historically, no.
So. That's the major difference.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the calendars where Christmas and New Year's Day falls. Christmas is on a Thursday, you bring the students to school on the twenty-second, twenty-third. Or do you bring them back on the Friday, the second, because we can have to have school on the first? So it's just kind of a really odd thing with the calendar, and that's going down one hundred eighty-three days, and some of the other issues in there, so.
But I would pick up December twenty-second, twenty-third versus the second week in June.
Absolutely.
Sure, yep.
That was a major discussion that we had.
So that's why.
I mean, I'm talking from a parent's standpoint.
Oh, yes, yeah.
My kids have never liked going to school.
So the calendar kind of works out okay, you know, if there isn't a lot of snow days, or if we don't bring the kids back, that Thursday, Friday, Thursday will be the last day for the kids, Friday will be the last day for staff, and that's, does allow for one snow makeup day in there so far, but.
Grab say eight, MC testing is in March.
So we typically go, we usually start the first week of April and we're done the second week of May. So it's usually five to six weeks, depending on the year. ACT is mid-March, early March. Juniors, access testing is usually February, March. I asked for feedback by the end of January, so we can sit down and look at all the feedback. We administratively, after the calendar goes out, we, we do create a document and make notes and stuff on it as well for us. For any changes or anything else, so kind of take that all into account.
Questions or comments? Moving, moving on to action item B, cellphone policy.
Once again, I think everybody's aware of the legislative session, in the last legislative session, they passed a bill that by March fifteenth, all districts have to have a cellphone policy. A lot of this has been driven by schools that, in fact, have eliminated cell phones from classrooms, from the hallways, from the cafeterias. And I, and I certainly don't blame some of these schools for what they have done. In our district, we've never allowed cell phones in our elementary or our middle school. And with that, Mr. Duckett and I have had a number of discussions over the course of the spring, or excuse me, over the course of the fall kind of what direction we want to do with cell phones, so I did have Mr. Duckett gather some data. Like to have a little bit of discussion on it tonight, and then tomorrow morning I'll be meeting with the policy review committee with the information that we get tonight to craft that into our policy, and it's a cellphone policy would go into policy five twenty-sixty. Internet's a policy that we have on track right now. With that, Mr. Duckett, you just want to quickly share out some of your information?
Sure, I'd, I'd met with the practice group team, meeting for the head of teachers first, earlier in the year. Visited with staff fully. I also surveyed the staff, which I believe you received the data earlier in your board packet, but and then I also sent out a parent survey, which was very, very similar, almost, almost identical to what I sent out to the staff, follow-up on. And essentially, overall, the recommendation based on the data that I received was to leave it, to leave the current high school policy as it is. With the understanding that the current language could be visited, which needed, as handbooks are approved by the board.
Can you review what that language is, right?
Sure. Right now, the state, when they sent out information to MASSP and to Mespa, Elementary School Principals Association. There was a group, basically, I think there were sixty-five school districts that shared their current policies, so that all districts across the state could have feedback to cater policy to what they felt was going to be best suiting their needs. Our, our current policy is very similar to, to a lot of that language. Basically, it's limited in that teachers have the opportunity to have more control in their, their own classroom. Stress the importance of educational reasons, and I think that was the main reason why teachers felt that they wanted the opportunity still to have some saying, and if their students could use their, their device in class. But basically, what we have right now is a limited form of, of use. Students can use their, their phones during hall passing between first and second hour, second and third, and in lunch, and with teacher permission. There are things in place that we have in place that, again, the state and MASSP and Mespa recommend that if you're going to have a limited, or if you're going to have no phones at all, that there should be a consequence, like first offense, second offense, third offense, and so on. And we had that in place, we've had things of that nature in place, we updated our policy in twenty twenty-two. So I think staff, myself, after we had conversed about it, just felt like, right now it felt like students have, this is one way that students are still learning phone etiquette through school. They're also realize that kids are really, really busy and that that device is often times a means of communication with a broader sense, not just, not just what's happening at school. So, so it's just felt like if you do things alone, at least not to overhaul things at this point in time. If there are things that come up, or things that change at the state department, or we have the, have the group feel, staff feel that we're going to make some adjustments, then we can do that, and that can be brought to the board.
Is there any data mental health wise? Would you study it, is there data that says, no, there are mental health benefits to having a there's a phone-free environment at school, or, or the opposite, having a more liberal policy?
I think, I think more data is probably stacked that, that's why health wise, the phones are more of a concern from a mental health standpoint. I think that prior to the pandemic, that there were, there were some things and data that was suggesting that phones are causing issue, but I also think that that, that information could be skewed a little bit from the standpoint of students aren't given the opportunity to be on the devices at all times, there's going to be more issues, obviously. So, but I think that those are things that we continue to study and look at.
There are a lot of variables that go in, but you, I mean, it's enough of an issue, and some schools are doing this, is there any? I, I just it'd be nice to have some data rather than.
Sure. Say that again? You know, some of the data that I've heard, or some of the information that I've heard is students may get a little frustrated with it, but toward the end of the year or after they're used to it, there's a sense that maybe it's, it's okay.
I guess what I meant was why the school went that way, why, why were the children issued that they had to go to zero tolerance?
You know, I really don't have an answer for that, I think each school has got their different reasons or different rationale.
Do you have a sense of what neighboring districts are?
I think there's two or three districts that have made the decision to go no phones at all, but I don't know if that's necessarily a hard no, because I think the only way for it to be a hard no is some districts are buying bags that you drop your phone in, your device in, when you lock in the door, and then you've got to deal with that issue. I think, I think there's always different angles, and I think when we get to when we get to a certain point where we feel like we need to make some adjustments, I'm sure we will. But I think the hard part is, we, we've had, I think, some pretty decent language in place. I think for some of the school districts that maybe have not had decent language in place. This was a lot more of an issue for them. Our language has been overall pretty, pretty spelled out with the consequences that, that ratchet, ratchet up for each situation. And I think, I think it's interesting, I think more staff at first felt, oh, I just, they're, they're a pain. I don't, I don't want to have to mention it that often as I'm mentioning it. But then they, I think there were some students that reflected, excuse me, staff that reflected in it, and they kind of went, well, then we can't do this, and we can't do this. And there's, there's just things that, education wise, that I think the staff, a number of those staff felt, there was some things that are really beneficial. So I think for us to try to find where that balance is, really where we're at, and continue to have that opportunity to tweak that.
Teachers aren't filling curriculums, would you expect, our expectation that students have a pool?
No, no, but there are, there are what-if scenarios and things that come up, and I know that some staff say, geez, I know my kids come up and they'll take, they'll take pictures of the smartphone or this and that, but. So. So it's, it's a balance, and I think at this point in time, it sends maybe some way to harm, with the understanding that we continue to see it, you know, to tweak it.
There are a lot of infractions dealing with cell phone, if compared to other school districts.
You know, I don't know about in comparison to other school districts, and I know.
What about a percentage, the total amount of disciplinary issues, how many of that is focusing on the cell phone half?
For us, probably twenty, twenty percent, maybe. It's been more this year, but we also obviously brought this to the forefront this year, and we've really been discussing it, studying it, and doing it. And staff, I think, realize the importance of making sure that they're trying to be as consistent as they can as well. I think that that's important, because when everybody is consistent, I think students understand that we mean what we say, and here is the important reasons for continuing to try to follow what the policy is.
What's at the top of your, what's in your papers?
I think just, I think consistency is probably the one thing, phones, and we continue to, I think, better. I think overall, I've had two or three conversations, I've gone door to door a couple of different times, and I'll take, I'll take an hour, fifth hour, for example, and I'll just go to every classroom and talk to twenty-five, thirty students at each stop, and we have dialogue regarding this. I've tried to explain the health component, behavioral health component, the academic component. If, if students misuse a device. The truth told, we have them for seven, seven and a half hours here, and we're trying to educate on value and importance of, of that. But the hard, the hard fact's truth is the other, a lot of time outside the school is the component that's, there is no, we don't have that control.
If I have five kids in my nursery, and all of them have a phone in their hand, irony of the subject. Like, it's just part of.
It's, like I said, I think that there's, it was interesting, I was at a recent conference, and there was a show of hands from districts that, that have no phones right now for students, and it was probably of the hundred people that were there, I think there was less than, I'm just guessing, a hundred people or so that were there, principals, administrators. Ten, ten raised their hand of that. So I don't know if it's coming, if it's, if it's going to, I think, again, I think we spent a lot of time discussing it this year. Because I think the state really is looking at wanting. because I think the state really is looking at wanting, that's why, that's why. That's where things are at right now. I could see potentially, I've mentioned this to students, to the students, I could potentially see things moving more toward unlimited, meaning, meaning not in classrooms at all. But, but again, I think, I think at this point in time, we just look at both, both chunks of data or let's just leave it for now. But that's, that's where things were at at this point.
I could see where the classroom stuff would make classroom management and challenging and teachers getting sick of just bugging kids. The part that I actually worry about is the lunchroom. Like, are, are people actually interacting? Are they talking to each other? Are they developing communication skills? And the reality is, this is our life and it's, it's all within six inches of us. But I don't think I'll be in high school, you're only going to be at that lunch table. You know, I, I, I know it's, there's pros and cons, quite a lot of cons and some pros in the classroom stuff, but I wonder mental health behavior, mental health, social relationship development.
Sure, sure. You know, I, I've been in the cafeteria quite a bit this, this past year and I enjoy having the dialogue with the, dialogue with the students and I believe that there's still face-to-face interaction and communication. Sometimes it's, it's pertaining to something on their device, but, but there's still that dialogue and there's still the relationships that are going on. You know, is it, are there some students that are maybe a little bit less focused on interaction? Yeah, there probably are a few, but I can think of overall. The lunchtime is, I guess, I know as adults, when we have lunch, we'll check our messages and so on. Teachers do. We all, it has become a part of our, of our day-to-day routines in life to sometimes simplify things. So, and sometimes we all fall victim, we all fall habit probably to, to not using that device. They're all practical purposes.
Do you see it used a lot as a means of fun for the conversation? You know, like that, it's moderating, right?
You know, I, I really believe that, I really believe that next steps would be just to continue to status, status quo, stay the course, but continue to study, see where things are, where things are heading. Because we don't know, maybe, maybe something with AI coming down the pipe where, where all schools, you say, yeah, we're just away with this and then the state level, things change. We just don't know because that moves so fast that by the start of twenty-four, twenty-five and the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, there are things that all of us in this room right now are going to go, really? When did that happen? So I think it's just important for us to continue to have dialogue and plan on doing that with our staff.
Any other questions for you guys before Eric and Brittany, or one more minute?
It is interesting to see what the local, you know, exhaust center committed in this year. More importantly, they also, you know, I think more are starting to ban than are starting to allow. It's going to be other ways is what has been happening. And at what point, if you talk about AI, will the state step in and say, this is the plan and you won't have a choice. You're going to have to put something in place. And if they do, we do some of the studies and they prove that it does work, they may step in and also say, this is what you better do. Right now it's up to us, but at some point it may not be up to us.
Well, I think students realize that it's probably as good as it's going to be. They, I've mentioned that a couple of times, not from a, a, a standpoint, but just from a realistic standpoint that, that it's important that they understand that policy needs to be followed and by and large, students have made decisions that, that counts for evidence, whatever the case. They realize that, that I was, I was supposed to.
I can see the good end of that. I mean, how many kids leave that lunchroom probably sad or mad or something that somebody sent them? If they, had they not had that phone, they probably wouldn't have got it during that day. That would have happened after hours. But, you know, I'm not, not everybody's leaving that lunchroom all happy.
Correct.
There, there was nothing bad that got sent to them.
Because when people are sending things, there's no process. It's just weird, blur, out. They had a process and they're going, ah, they better not send it. But a phone, it's gone.
I think there's some, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to going with this kind of policy kind of thing, but I, I think there's also something that can be said for, I don't know if there's like stuff that you can put in the lunchroom, you know, stack your phones or have a, you know, like, you know, people walking through the lunchroom and like, what are you doing? You're just, you're all, but I mean, it's, it's reality. You go out, you go out at a restaurant, you see people that are clearly on a date and they, they're just like this. You're like, wow, man, that's not, there's something wrong there, but, but but that's the world. I'm not sure, you're not going to change the world. You need to, they need to, they're a part of the world. But it also, it's just like developing those social skills is huge. I still believe there's a lot of social skill development in that. Yeah, and I think that can be done without a policy. That, that just can be like teachers making observations or the beginning of class when kids are teaching, you know, sitting there and they're all on their phone and go, wait a sec, let's, you know.
And we've been having conversation regarding some of the stuff, you know, with people, stuff that we're doing, which lends itself perfectly to some of these things because this is real life stuff. It's happening every day and it's not just, it's not just an issue at schools. It's an issue where adults have a lot of. Yes, it is.
Any other questions for Adam? Moving on to.
Bring my coffee tomorrow?
So some of my last radio show, you'll hear my opinion on it.
What are you guys going to put tomorrow? Just determine what the policy is or?
What is your?
Based, based upon this discussion, I have a couple of different variables of what we can do with our current policy. So what I'm kind of hearing right now and particularly Eric and Melissa, I will discuss tomorrow if this is the route we want to go. We'll kind of go the route of stay as is, you know, cell phones middle school, no cell phones elementary, limited restrictive use in high school. That would be my recommendation, not only professionally and personally, but also from whatever.
But middle and elementary still can keep phone in their locker.
In their locker.
And then they can still check their text messages.
They use in their locker all day long.
Kids will have them on. They'll, they'll look at them, you know. It's not like I go up and down, take a hundred cell phones at, between classes, but they're not supposed to have them out. If we see that they have them out between eight fifty and two fifty, we take them. It's, it's more of a learning process. It's, it's progressive. So like the first time we take a phone, they'll have it, we'll have it for the day. The second time is they have to turn it in during the day for a week. And then it's parent pickup. We might have one or two kids that have more than two violations a year. So.
How do you do with smart watches?
And see, that's the next thing. You, you know, you start getting into smart watches and now you got these glasses that'll do things.
I ask you, they're amazing.
They're, it's, it's all of this stuff. I would say my biggest concern about phones is not necessarily the phone. It's the, the effects that the phone and the social media on the phone that has been, I would say, studied and talked about on females, how detrimental it is, the social media part is to especially girls, and how much more anxiety society has seen in the middle school age level of kids. And they kind of don't necessarily connect it to the smartphone, but they connect it to the birth of social media. So that's what I would say we're trying to avoid more in middle school is the Snapchat, the Facebook, the Instagram piece where kids are just scrolling for hours aimlessly.
And smartphones are, are okay.
I, I, I really think the phone is an issue. It's what you have on the phone. The, we, yeah, so. And we do, you know.
What did you say?
You can have a smartphone or a smart watch on there.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so smart watches, you know, we don't, like if we see kids texting on them all the time and things like that, we handle that on an individual basis, but yeah. Again, we don't go around taking watches off of kids either. It's just, it's more of a learning tool and that's what we want to use. Like when I, I was subbing in math today, I had all the kids come up and take pictures of the answer piece so that when they went home tonight, they knew if they were getting the right answer or not. You know, you have kids that, you know, it's, it's a tool, just like we all use it as a tool. Use it for a tool, not something to kill time.
I don't envy you guys trying to be the technology tools. That'd be like Jason.
And, and I would say Mr. Duckett Bradfield's the same way is, it's, we, we deal with it, but it's not as bad as it was. I would say, I don't deal with many, as many serious issues this year as I have the last three or four years because I think we've done a better job of, and the elementary's done a real good job of educating proper use where we hear less of the bullying through Snapchat and the amount of Snapchat issues that I had the first few years was ridiculous.
Yeah, when he does approve our handbook last June, we banned smartphones. They did not allow them in the elementary. They were using them to record things and we're not, I mean, recording each other. So they are in the handbook. It is prohibited.
If it makes you feel any better than business, we'll probably do right there once with somebody for excessive texting during the office hours.
See?
Rare, very rare when it does happen.
You can definitely tell the difference between high school lunches and middle school lunches.
In what way?
It's just the age.
Oh, they talk.
Because, because high school kids can use their phones. Middle school kids can't use their phones.
They're louder.
Oh, yeah. You want to see a major difference come in there during that time period.
Well, it's not bad.
It's different.
But it gets back to what you're saying. Now's the time to interact. I mean, you're only going to be a kid so long. Enjoy your time. Don't spend your time on a phone. You know, like those two down there.
Don't call nothing else. Got three boys in the house. That's the thing.
Couple of them.
They put, they put notes in.
Oh, they're typing notes in.
Yes. Yeah, that's a good idea. It's a tool.
Moving on. Moving on to item nine, consent agenda, motion to accept, approve the consent agenda as listed. And a second?
Second.
Hasn't been that long since we had a meeting.
No, and December is usually a slow hiring thing, so we just have one quick hire and one resignation for spring.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to item ten, treasurer's report, motion to approve, accept treasurer's report?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll say it.
Highlights?
Um, the only highlight is we paid out the custodian's retro after they settled their contract. But wasn't significant otherwise. All of our expenses and revenues are very much in line.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting, approving the treasurer's report? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to action items. First of which is donations and gifts, motion to accept donations and gifts as listed. And a second?
Second.
Generous gifts?
Yep, for some of our winter sports season, also some additional coats, hats and mittens and boots. We talked about that last night. We have a lot of stuff for kids that either don't have it or forgot it. They can do blowout. Some adult basic gift donations, basketball, and you're starting to see the first beginnings of the donations for the metal shop. Some standard iron and some also steel from welding to start welding the, the booths in the metal shop. And a very generous donation from Malrose Electric to do all the electrical work for all the new HVAC stuff and everything that's in there. So once again, this is a, a great thing. Also, there's a memorial for the Mary, who's not a memorial, who just passed away here in the last couple of month and a half or so. Anonymous, anonymous donation, so. But their metal shop is going to go through a major transformation here, property by, in January. And this is all to those people in communities, welders, metal workers, you got to have them. And so we really appreciate those donations from welding trailers and Malrose electric companies that set up and can make this a wealth for, wealth for a while, a metal shop that the kids are going to vastly learn from.
Any questions or comments for expressing our appreciation?
I'm sure.
Yep. Roll call?
Yep.
Pat is yes, Randy is a yes.
Yes.
Eric is yes, Mark?
Yes.
Melissa, Bethany?
Great. Moving on to item B. A motion to approve final two thousand twenty-four payable two thousand twenty-five district seven forty property tax levy. A motion, please.
So move.
And a second?
I'll say it.
All right. So we're going to go through our annual truth and taxation hearing. I'm Stephanie Agneward. That's not clear. I'm the business manager. Oh, okay. We're going to talk about the current year budget, the proposed property taxes, and then there's a time at the end for comments or questions. For last school year, we did end the year. Our audit was approved at the last school board meeting in November. We did increase our fund balance and then we got a clean audit report. All were very good and were discussed last week. Excuse me, last month. We are projecting for a slight decrease in enrollment for this school year. We'll talk about all of this in more detail. School district budgets are divided into funds. The funds are separated based on the revenue sources and the purposes of the revenues. Our district has five funds. General, which is where all the instructional expenses and the maintenance of the building. Then we have food service, community service, debt service, and then the internal service fund, which is our self-funded dental plan. This is our budget document. It was posted in the newspaper and it's also available on our website if you'd like to look at it in more detail. The first columns start with the fund balances at the beginning of the school year last year. Then they go through our actual revenues and expenditures, and then the ending balances in June, which then become our beginning balances for this school year, our proposed revenues and expenses for this school year, and then what we project the fund balances to be at the end of the year. The biggest thing to note with this is we brought just under nine hundred thousand dollars in, I got off, in increases to our fund balances. Seems like a lot of money, is a lot of money. But the one thing I noticed was eighty-one percent of that amount is restricted. But the one thing I noticed was eighty-one percent of that amount is restricted. With the largest piece being a piece within the general fund and then the food service fund. Our food service fund actually increased by over $301,000. We think the number one reason for that is the change in the funding for meals. We did have some brand new funding from the state of Minnesota last year in the areas of literacy. Library and additional student support personnel. Some of those, we weren't exactly sure how to use the funding, so a lot of that went to our fund balances. And we will work that out this year to use it, some of it, if we can't actually use it this year or next year, we will lose it. So that's another reason why it's restricted to just that purpose. We also increased our balances for long-term facilities maintenance, medical assistance and capital. And the long-term facilities maintenance and capital, we kinda have projected to use person different projects this year and next year. It's interesting to note, the fund balance at the beginning of last year, thirty-seven percent of it was restricted. By the end of the school year, forty-five percent of it was restricted. And with the budget that we have for this current school year, we're projecting that forty-nine percent of that budget will be restricted. So the way that the state of Minnesota is funding us is changing slightly, and they're putting more restrictions on the funds. That they're giving us what we can use them for. For our budget. This was approved in June and it's based on lots of assumptions of what our funding is gonna look like. What our student population and our enrollment is going to look like. So I am going through revision of this budget using our more accurate information that we have now. I'll present that in January, it's not going to have huge changes to what this budget is going to look like. So we're gonna focus on this and talk about this, we're projecting for a very small decrease to fund balance, about $39,000. And we're gonna dig into that a little bit more. This is a look at our revenue for our budget by fund, with the largest, of course, going toward general fund. So just to recap one more time, that's where all of our instructional expenses are, all of our building maintenance, those types of items. Eighty, almost eighty-six percent of all of our revenue goes toward that. Then we have debt service, food service, and then community service. Where does our money come from? The majority of our funds come from state aid, seventy-five, excuse me, seventy-six point five percent. Then we have the local property tax levy, which we're gonna talk about in more detail later. We have some other sources of revenue, and then we have our federal. I kinda think it's interesting that only three point four three percent of our funding comes from the federal government. When we look at our expenditures, especially by fund, they really mirror our revenues. Our general fund, eighty-six point five six percent, then we go debt service, food service and community service, just like we did on the revenue side. What do we spend our money on? Our number one expense is our people, all of the staff. When we look at salaries, wages and benefits, they combine to sixty-eight point seven percent. Then we have our purchase services, supplies and materials and debt service. Oh, one other thing, the state of Minnesota recommends that our direct instruction expense be seventy percent of our general fund. This takes into account all of our funds, but our direct instructional expense within our general fund is at seventy-six percent. So we meet that criteria. This is a look at our enrollment over the last eleven years. We did have a decline in enrollment between school year fourteen, fifteen to school year twenty twenty-one of about a hundred students. But since then, we've been very stable, only within ten students, either up or down for the last several years. We ended the year last year, one thousand two hundred and eighty, and we're projected this year, one thousand two hundred and seventy-one. So, very stable. Why is this important? It's important because some of the levies base their numbers on our student population, our overall population. And then all of our state aid is based on our pupil numbers. Let's talk about the levy, for us, the levy discussion starts in September. That's when the Department of Education puts out the worksheets of what can you levy for. Then in September, we come to the board and we decide what, what amount are we gonna levy for. You can do maximum, that is what we decided to do. In November, the counties mail out the proposed property tax statements. And then today, we give our presentation, allow the public to comment, and then afterwards, we ask the school board to approve and certify the levy. On May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, that is when the first half of these property taxes will be collected. October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five is when the second half of the property taxes are collected. And then between November twenty twenty-five and June twenty twenty-six, that's when the counties remit those funds. To the schools as our revenue. There were two legislative changes that came out of the last session in twenty twenty-three. That are starting with the impact, starting impact for the twenty-five levy. The first is there's an increase to the homestead exclusion for that range of seventy-six thousand five hundred and seventeen thousand. And then they also increased the first tier limit for ag homestead land from two point one five million to three point five. This is an example of the valuation notice that everyone receives for their property and gives your first look at what. They are looking at valuing your property at. There's a couple of things that can cause your property taxes to increase or decrease. The number one is the overall value of your property. The second is the total value of all the property in the district. And then there's the homestead exclusions and other credits. Our particular levy is expected to increase, it's seven point three nine percent more than last year. However, because our overall tax base is also expected to increase. The amount that individual property owners will see is not going to be as high as that full seven point four nine percent. This is an example of the property tax statement that you will receive or you should have received. Couple of other additional items that will impact your taxes are any voter-approved referendums, there weren't any for us this year. Other tax jurisdiction levy changes, special assessments or changes in state funding. I highlighted in the pink box at the top, this is where you'll find your estimated market value for your property. Your homestead exclusions and then your taxable net market value. It shows you twenty twenty-four and then it shows you twenty twenty-five. If you look at that, you'll see that your value probably went up, but your homestead exclusion went up more than the value of your property. And so in this instance, the taxable market value from year to year actually went down. That's why we're anticipating that even though our total levy is seven point four nine percent increase. Your property taxes should not be that much of an increase. This green box that I've highlighted at the bottom is where you'll find your actual information for the school district part of the levy. It'll show you what it was for two thousand twenty-four and what it is for this year. This grid, this information was put together specific for our property tax levy. It has a big assumption in it in that it assumes that your property did not change value, that way we can do apples for apples. So if it was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars last year and two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars this year, what is the impact of our school levy? And it's nine dollars, that's how much it will increase for that, which the two hundred and seventy-five thousand is what they say is the. Is the average home cost or price in Melrose. For owners of agricultural property, they're actually saying that there will be a decrease for this year, about five and a half percent. Why is it different? It's different because of the way that the properties are valued and the different exemptions that they have and how it's calculated for the. Referendum market value on the taxes. This is our actual property tax levy by tax type. At the top, I'm showing the two way that they, the two ways that they look at the tax bases or referendum market value. Or the adjusted net tax capacity. It just means one of them has exemptions and one of them doesn't, they're both increasing. The, we'll just say RMV, it's easier for me to say, is going up nine point four percent and the adjusted net tax capacity is eighteen point eight. As I said, the RMV has seasonal rec exemption, the homestead and ag land exemptions. For those of you that don't know, the ag land exemption exempts, is is, it means that it exempts that. Exempts the farmland, except for the house, the garage and one acre. Our RMV voter is our operating referendum. And then the next largest group is the non-voter approved, which is within the NTC. That are our, those are our school bonds that we have. All of those get an ag to school credit, and the thing that's interesting about that credit is the state of Minnesota actually pays that. Whereas, when you're looking at the referendum market value, when you get an exemption, it just reduces your property. But it spreads the tax out over the rest of the base. The ag to school credit actually pulls it out and gets paid by the state of Minnesota from a different source. When we look at the property taxes by our different funds, the majority of it will be spent on the general fund. Direct instructional programs, transportation, building maintenance, sixty-seven percent. Four percent to community ed, twenty-nine percent to debt service. It breaks out all those things I showed you before, now in this format, so the operating referendum, local optional. And then all of the programs that we are allowed to get some levy funding and some state aid are all in this group. Then we have community service and then debt service. For the debt service, I wanna point out that we have four current bonds, two of which are going to be done in January. And then we have our new abatement bond for the parking lot project that will come on in January. This is the summary of our proposal for the tax levy, it's two points, it's just over two point nine million dollars. And so this is the resolution that we'll be asking the school board to approve. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
This applies to the board and the community.
Yes, absolutely.
Does this balance still keep us in that three-month reserve or, well, two and a half where we are now, or is it?
This is not, like, my overall budget is showing a slight decline to the fund balance, so it doesn't increase it. It's like, it'll be slight, slight impact, that's pretty neutral. Our, our fund balance is about six million dollars, so forty thousand dollars of six million is that. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just to reiterate. Any district resident, maybe the tenants and witnesses who ask questions or to express an opinion on the proposed final level. Being considered for adoption by the school board is given the opportunity to speak now. Are there any questions from board members?
Well explained.
Very well.
Very well explained.
Picking on the kids on the floor.
Really?
But this, as far as comparing what other school districts do when they are. Opposed with this same situation that every district, but. We are, what we're proposing is consistent with what other districts.
Yeah, actually, we would probably be a little bit on the oversight because of our bonds and things that are out there.
Yes, both Sock Center and Albany have large school building bonds for projects that they were just finishing. So their debt is much higher than ours right now.
Right. So. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the final two thousand twenty-five payable two thousand twenty-five district seven forty property tax levy, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
So when we're all done, Becky usually signs off on the certification, so who will do that? Randy? Okay, so then I need to get with you for a few minutes afterwards to sign the paperwork.
Moving on to. Item C. Motion to approve budget reduction resolution. And a second?
Second.
This is an annual.
Annual resolution, just in case, as we get towards creating the budget in the spring legislative session, a lot of things that are going on. I certainly don't anticipate it happening, but it's just something we have to pass, just in case we do have to make those budget reductions.
And that would be the spring or the summer?
The spring.
Budget's not gonna be out till.
Well, yeah, we would be doing it, if, if we anticipate something that's gonna come out of the legislature, we would start formulating some of those budget cuts. And then it would be when the final budget is made, June, that those cuts would be made. The issue is we'd have to do some preemptive. Possibly staff reductions before then.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to action item D, motion to approve negotiated contract with. Negotiated notice of assignment for food service workers. And a second?
Second.
This is a contract for this academic twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, we met a couple of weeks ago. Becky and I were there. I got a proposal from the union, from the, not union, from the food service. Yes, we got a food service workers, all of the, well, almost all of the workers, I think, were there. And, which was helpful, cause then the communication, there's no lapses in communication. About an hour, hour and a half. Two or three proposals, counter proposals, I think things are in line with. Custodial and pairs aren't negotiated, but it's not out of line where that seems to be going.
The numbers Greg shared were eye-opening.
Say that again.
The numbers Greg shared with us. Pretty eye-opening.
But we just, we just said that issues within the district based upon the market rate, what's going on. And I don't think anybody that's read any of the articles with what's going on with the school budget schools are competing with the private market. And because of that, food service was probably the lower end pay scale of some of the districts around us. And the pay equity scale within the district. We did that in the custodial contract last time, wrong, we made a market adjustment, I think it was. A recommendation to board committee from the food services. Better kind of up there, eight per hour a little bit.
First, your increase is pretty significant, but then you look at the hourly and it's.
Yeah, it, it puts it in line with where the pairs and the custodials, which are the closest comparison of that.
Is there a chart without, I don't recall, that more years have served the.
Yes. Yeah, we put that in place two times ago, they all, they all get on separate notes of the climates. They all, they all get to get on separate notes of the plans. And I was given a directive a couple of times ago to put it all in one document. Otherwise, you were given 16 different notes.
That was a previous contract. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the notice of assignment, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Motion for adjournment.
Before we adjourn. As we're well aware of, we have two more board members here tonight that will be going off the school board. Chair Dr. Heller and Vice Chair Randy Doctor. I have worked with these two individuals over my seven-plus years, almost eight years here. I can't thank these two gentlemen enough for all the time, commitment, leadership that they put into this district. Had some issues with the pandemic. We've also had some issues that trying to get the bond referendum passed, but through all that, we had the cohesiveness and leadership of these two gentlemen. So I can tell you this, on a professional and personal level, I'm going to miss them very much. They each brought very different strengths to the school board. And I think I just want to publicly thank both you gentlemen for that, so thank you very much. Dr. Heller, take your hand. I would see very similar to the yellow box I've got. Thank you for your years of service and your retirement in December 2024.
Thank you very much.
Because he's been telling stuff there.
And Mr. Doctor, here's your plaque as well. I had, I had one board chair that I think from the health point of view really cared about my health, one that gave me a hard time about my knee surgery all the time. Not going to miss that very much. Thank you, Mr. Doctor, for your years. I don't know if you get up, let's hear it, Flex.
I guess I want to thank people on the board and people in the administration. I've learned a lot. I think some things I would do differently and some things I'd do better, but I've learned a lot and I think I have learned that there are a lot of people in this building, in this district that are very devoted and talented as far as their interest in the kids and doing what's best for the kids. And people on the board, people have different opinions, but people are interested in what's best for the kids. I want to tell you how thankful I am for being a part of this for the last 12 years. I am not going anywhere. I still work here, I still am part of the community. I'm still interested in what's going on at the school. If I could be a liaison to the clinic or the hospital, let me know. I definitely want to do that. I'm not, I'm not leaving because I'm not interested. My kids have graduated and I want to thank everybody, the teachers, the administrators, the parrots, the staff, administrators, that this school has been a blessing to our family.
Well, I echo everything Pat said. The one thing I want to say is, is that it was really different when you come onto the board. You got kind of expectations, and you think you have this authority or that authority, and you realize really quick how much you have to count on a superintendent or your principals, your business manager. And by doing that, things start to click, things move along very well. I just, I have that most appreciation for each and every one of you, all in different ways. And same with our educators, our cooks. Spend time working a basketball tournament, and you don't realize how much work it is just, you know, to get a cook, you know, the tweezers. One I worked with a couple of weekends ago, phenomenal. And, and it gets everywhere in the school. I think we had a very, we had a good school, we had a good system in place. I realize there's bumps in the road, I realize there's always things we can do better, and they'll come.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. Most in for adjournment?
Oh, we got to get up, first and second.
Second. We got a second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
I think some treats over here for a minute, if you want some?
Yes, I think you will.
We'll see y'all later. Thank you, too, again, for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Merry Christmas. I'm not going anywhere.
Pat, thanks for the minute. I'm going to be around. That is twelve.
Okay. And before we go anywhere, any, I got to sign some stuff here. There's no other contracts signed for tonight.
As Pat, I'm not going anywhere.
Not dead.
No, we're not dead.